Been a real privilege to be here with you. Always feel like I need to apologize if you've had to listen to me so much, but nonetheless, it's been a great privilege for me. I mentioned Friday evening that I felt like I needed a little something that I'd... and I feel like that the Lord has answered my prayer. So, thank you to everybody that's been here. And what a good group of young people. Isn't that amazing? That could be doing anything, but you're doing this. You're here. And nothing inspires my generation more than young people that are excited about serving God. And thank you to Brother John, Sister Heidi, Brother Andy and the music, and all those that have served food. And you know, I was reminded of Martha and Mary. You remember Mary was... or Martha was comforted about with much serving? And so, we've all had our Martha experience, but may God help us tonight to have the Mary experience, where we can just sit at the feet of Jesus. There's no more serving, no more anything needs to be done, and so, we can be like Mary and just put everything else aside, not be concerned about it, but just sit at the feet of Jesus. I think that God would have something in store for us. I think He already has, really. Jude, "The servant of Jesus Christ and brother of James, to them that are sanctified by God the Father, preserved in Jesus Christ and called, mercy unto you and peace and love be multiplied." Beloved, when I gave all diligence to write unto you of the common salvation, it was needful for me to write unto you and exhort you that you should say together, 'Earnestly contend for the faith that was once delivered unto the saints.'" Okay, now you said it, so we're gonna hold you to it, okay? You've made that proclamation that you're going to earnestly contend, so the Lord will have His eyes on us to make sure that we follow through with what we have said we're going to do. Here, I like here Jude. How does he introduce himself? A servant of Jesus Christ. What a high calling. You know, if they can't say anything about you and me in the years to come, if people talk about us, may they just say, "He was a servant of Jesus Christ." She was a servant of Jesus Christ. That was all she... that was all she was interested in. That was our claim to fame, I guess they say, that we were just servants of Jesus Christ. That was what Jude wanted to be known for. He could've introduced himself in various ways. He said, "The brother of James." James was the leader of the church in that time. In fact, they were both children of Mary and Joseph that had not believed on Jesus until after his resurrection. And so, have you ever tried to identify with someone to kind of make yourself of some reputation and say, "Well, I'm..." I think of Brother Wayne Butler. You know, I'm pretty good friends with Brother Wayne, and you know him, but he talks about when he was 14, 15 years old, he was down at the altar praying at camp meeting, and one of the older saints grabbed him by the arm and asked him, "Are you saved, Wayne?" And he looked at him and said, "Well, I'm Rich Butler's son." And Wayne said, "He said..." The man said to him, "Yes, I know, but are you saved?" See, sometimes it's to our advantage to say that we're related to someone, or so-and-so is my brother, or something like that. Well, God bless you. Good luck with that one, because I'm telling you, it doesn't do you any good. It may work against you. But if you can say, "I'm a servant of Jesus Christ," now that puts you up here. That puts you in high regard. That's somebody we can trust. That's somebody we can put our faith in even if we need to, somebody that's really a servant of Jesus Christ. That's something that we want to... If we could put it on our resume to get the best job, wouldn't that be good? "I don't have a college education. I've never done this, but I'm a servant of Jesus Christ." You're hired. Wouldn't that be good? I'm afraid it's not gonna work that way, but he says, "To those that are sanctified," indicating it was a work that had been accomplished. It's important that we understand the tense and the words that are used here, because it was a work that was accomplished. He didn't say, "I'm being sanctified. I'm kind of trying to grow into that." You know, you've heard it said, you know, the old sin nature, the old Adamic nature that needs to be eradicated. People have compared that to weeds in a garden, and they talk about a growing experience. Have you ever tried to grow weeds out of your garden? Doesn't work. You need to haul them out of there. You need to... In fact, you need to root them out of there. When I was a kid, I'm just a farm kid from Roseburg, okay? Literally, I worked on the farm. I was thinking the other day, telling somebody about, "Oh, they were out of hot water," or something like that. You know, I'm the youngest of seven kids. We took a bath on Sunday night, and that lasted us the whole week. And I wasn't necessarily the first one in the bath, okay? Trying to think about what my point was. We need to be purified. The old weeds need to be eradicated out of your garden. The old sin nature needs to be eradicated out of your life. And only the power of the blood of Jesus can do that, can root out and sanctify, say, make us morally pure. We are sanctified. That's who he's writing to. That's who he's referring to. That's who he's... Those that are preserved in Jesus Christ. Mercy unto you, peace and love be multiplied. Beloved, when I gave all diligence to write to you... Sounds like he wanted to write to them, but something is more relevant, something is more important, and he needs to maybe write a shorter letter, because the times were so serious that, "I wanted to write more, but I need to write at least this much to you and give all diligence to write unto you of the common salvation." The same salvation you received is what I received. Didn't know too much about it. Came into the Apostolic Faith Church, as I've mentioned. My family that came, you know, they saw that tract, "You must be born again." We had no idea what that meant. Didn't know anything about it. My brother Dale talks about, he thought that was about like reincarnation, that you'd come back as a plant, or a vegetable, or a person, or a something. He really, he did. He thought that this would be interesting reading. He took it home. Boy, he found out something different. Something he'd never heard. You could be saved from your sins. Not that you even had to be, but that you could be. The Lord saved him. Took some doing, but he repented and asked the Lord to forgive him. Common salvation. The same God that saves you saves me. A young man testified the other night, Noah did, that he was saved at seven years old, and he thought he didn't have much of a testimony. Oh, that's the best testimony. That's the very best. God keeps you throughout your teenage years. That's amazing. That is amazing. That is the best testimony. Don't ever think it's no good. Oh, it's the best one. It's the common salvation. Saves young people, saves older people. My dad was saved when he was 48 years old. You know, but that's the common salvation that he's writing to them about. But he says, "It's needful for me to write to you and exhort you and encourage you, because it's vital. Times are hard, but I need to exhort you that you should earnestly contend for the faith that was once delivered unto the saints." You know, this was more than just the faith that it takes to be saved, or the faith that it takes to have an answer to prayer. He's talking about their entire religious system of belief he's talking about. There's a lot of contending going on. It occurred to me, I wanted to ask you, and I will. Are you a contender? Or are you a pretender? Yeah. They say that. I was... When I was a kid, there was boxers, you know, that weren't the champion, but they were a contender. In fact, I'll tell you another funny thing. Being the youngest boy, Mom and... Or Dad, my brothers, they would turn on the TV, and that was back in the day when you got two or three channels and you had those rabbit ears, you know? And you'd tie to hangers and foil on there. And I remember they were watching a boxing match, a contender. And they... I was five or six years old, and they had me stand up and go grab a hold of the rabbit ear, because they got better reception. And I had to stand there the whole boxing match. I couldn't even see it, but they were interested in this contender. I don't remember who won the fight. I never even saw it. I had to stand there the whole time. But are you a contender? Are you... Because contenders are champions. That's what he says. You need to earnestly contend for this faith. You know, I thank God. I was saved in the Apostolic Faith Church in Roseburg, Oregon. I was sanctified in the Apostolic Faith Church in Roseburg, Oregon. I received the baptism of the Holy Ghost in the Apostolic Faith Church in Roseburg, Oregon. That's where God called me. I'm an unashamed fan, if you will, or a proponent of the Apostolic Faith Church. That's where God called me. People say, "Well, you..." God could've saved you anywhere. Well, maybe that's true, but I know where He did save me. So, that's the faith that I'm a contender for. That's the one... And I've been able to introduce our organization in Romania to people that didn't know anything about it. And I start with the history of 1905 on Bonnie Bray Street, and 1906 on Azusa Street, and then in Portland, Oregon. And I tell them, "For over 115 years, we have preached salvation from sin, and we still do. We're contenders for the faith. We're earnestly contending." And we tell them, and people are amazed. They've never heard of this before. How could you hold true to the same doctrines and tenets for over 115 years? Because we're contenders. And I'm unashamed to say, "I'm a member of the Apostolic Faith Church." Paul referred to it as "my gospel," and he referred to it in other places as "our gospel." I feel like this is my gospel. And it's been delivered to you and to me. Given to you and to me. We didn't have to put it together. We didn't have to figure it out. We didn't have to pioneer it. It was handed to me. Really, I feel that way. People were saved before I was alive, and they were contenders for this faith. Earnest contenders. And they kept it pure, and they handed it to me. They delivered it to me so that I might... It's been entrusted to me to keep it. Not to change it, not to make it more palatable, but just to keep it and deliver it to the next generation. I feel responsible for that. You know, I benefited so much. Shouldn't I take some responsibility for what I benefited from? To entrust or to deliver something means to put it in someone's care to keep it safely. Several years ago, my daughter was going on a vacation with another... With her school friend and their family. They were going out of the country, and she had saved some money to spend, and she got ready to go, and we talked about the money that she had, and she decided, well, she had a... She had too much, in my opinion. She didn't need to take that much with her, and I was worried about keeping that safe. And so, she decided, she gave me a hundred dollar bill. Now, a hundred dollars back in those... Well, a hundred dollars back in this day is a lot of money to me. But back in those days, it really was a lot of money. And... But she... But I remember her telling me, "Dad, now keep this, and when I get back, you know, give it back to me." And I said, "Yeah." And I said, "Okay." And you know, she was gone about a week, and several times I went somewhere, and I thought, "Well, I could just use that hundred dollars, because it was in my wallet, and then, you know, I could just replace it." What do you suppose she would've thought if she would've come back and said, "Dad, where's my hundred dollar bill?" And I would've given her five twenties. See, it'd been the same amount, but it just wouldn't have been the same. You see, she gave me something in that purest form, I guess you would say. She wanted it back, and I was able to give her back the same one hundred dollar bill. It took some doing. I'd been in the store looking at fishing stuff or something. I don't know. You know, the things that I need, you know, sure, and... Or that I deserve, or something. I don't know. Well, much more serious is our gospel. That transforms lives. Have you experienced that? Yes. It changed your life, whatever age you were. Old thing passed away, behold, all things became new. It's an amazing experience. That you can go down to the altar and cry out to God and get up a changed person. The habit's gone, the sin gone, a new life in Christ Jesus, and then to be sanctified and have that old nature eradicated. What an experience! And then to be filled with His Holy Spirit. And then to be filled with the call of God, and whatever portion of life we are, God has called us to serve us. He has. It's important. We've received all the benefits. Why not take on the responsibility at a young age? Give Him your all. You'll never be sorry. The faith that was once delivered unto the saints. I was driving to church one evening with Debbie and I. We don't often go together, because I'm one of those people that if you can't be on time, be early, you know, it's a habit I have. And so, sometimes I just drive in. It's not that far. And... But we were driving together that night, and she saw me carrying my Bible. She goes, "Are you preaching tonight?" And I said, "Yes." And she said, "What are you gonna preach on?" And I said, "Well, I'm not sure. You got any ideas?" You know, like, that's what we do, husbands and wives, you know, kinda. And she said, "Well, you better get busy." And I said, "Well, what do you think about Jude? Earnestly contend for the faith that was once delivered unto the saints." I said, "What do you think about that?" And she said, "Well, it was once delivered unto the saints, so it should be delivered... It could be delivered to us?" Yeah, and it's been delivered to you, your generation. It's been entrusted to you. Why? Why did he think it was, "You're gonna have to earnestly contend?" Well, he says, "There are certain men crept in unawares. They're ordained to that aforetime. There are people that come along that just put questions." You ever heard the question, "Hath God said..." Where did that happen? In the Garden of Eden, isn't it? Book of Genesis. Did God really say that? Does it really mean that? Yes, it does. God gives us victory. That's what it means. When God saves us, the sin goes out of our life. When God sanctifies us, the nature goes out of our... Is that really what it means? Yes. It's really what it means. We've experienced that. We've realized our need for it. Does everybody really need to have the baptism of the Holy Ghost? Yes. You really do. The Lord has it for you. You know, when you've been sanctified, you consecrate, you dedicate your life to God, you give Him everything. The Lord sanctifies you, gives you a clean vessel. You're already ready for the baptism of the Holy Ghost, right there. You have no reason really even to delay. He wants to fill you. He wants to baptize you. He wants to immerse you in the Holy Spirit. Jesus said, "He..." When Jesus spoke of the Holy Spirit to His disciples, He says, "You know Him, for He is with you." You remember the first time you met the Holy Spirit? I was a sinner when I felt the power of the Holy Spirit. I came under conviction. The Lord saved me. His Spirit bore witness with my spirit. I knew I was saved. His Spirit bore witness with me when I knew I was sanctified. You see, I knew Him, because He was with me. He says, "You know Him, because He is with you, but He shall be in you." And that's an experience that God has for all of us, and we need Him. I have needed Him many, many times. I have found myself in situations that I was not prepared for, that I did not know what to say, that how... And I'm thinking, "How did I get myself into this?" And yet, God has helped me to say the words, I believe, that... And to bring to remembrance His word. And by the way, you can't... He can't bring remembrance things in His word unless you have read it. You can't remember something you've never read, so you need to read it and to study it, and then He can bring it to your remembrance, and then the words will come, and you will think, "Well, that wasn't me. That was the Holy Spirit helping me." Because there are those that come in unaware. We weren't... We didn't expect it. We didn't anticipate it. Someone maybe even that we trusted that questions things. We need to be well-versed. We need to be convinced. We need to be contenders, not pretenders, because if you're a contender, you will know this word. You will know it. You can quote it. "God said..." And if somebody asks you a question and you're not sure, you can say, "I don't know right now, but get back to me tomorrow, and I'll study it, and I'll know it." Because it's not about my opinion, or what I think, or what I feel. It's about what God says. And sometimes what God says seems to be hard to deliver to some people, but we have a responsibility to tell them what God says and what God demands of us, and His promises. You think about God's promises. This word has been inspired from heaven. You know, may God inspire us to take hold of His inspired promises. They're all ours. It's already been inspired. Just grab a hold of it. I'm speaking to me too now, because I'm faulty, and I struggle sometimes. And sometimes I say things from the pulpit, and then I go home and think, "Man, I've gotta do this now, because I just said it in front of everybody." You know one of those? So, He tells them why here in these verses, and some of them seem to be pretty obscure, and we maybe don't know. He mentions the sin of Sodom and Gomorrah. We understand what that is. He mentions those that were contended with Moses. He mentions those that... But He says why we need to be contenders, but then He tells us, starting in verse 20, how. That's important. God will tell us how. In verse 20, He says, "But beloved, building yourselves up on your most holy faith, praying in the Holy Ghost." Building yourself up in this most holy faith. How do we do that? Well, special meetings is a good way. It's a good way to be around like-minded people. For when our kids were teenagers, we did our best... Roseburg, close proximity with Grants Pass, Medford especially, but even Dallas, Portland. We did our best to make sure they got to special meetings. Were around like-minded teenagers so that they could meet people, because you know, pretty soon... Well, I'll give you an example. My son got a special deer tag one year to go out and, I guess it's politically correct, to harvest a deer. We always just called it shooting one, but either way, he got a tag, a youth tag, a special one, to go out and do that. And so, I took him out the first day. We got up early in the morning, and he was not successful. And then, so the next weekend, we were going to go out on Friday, and I remember he... I could tell something was kind of bothering him, and he said, "Dad," he says, "I don't want to disappoint you," but he says, "There's special meetings in Medford." He says, "I'd like to go down on Friday night." He was 16, just learned how to drive a car. Had his car. I told him, I said, "You know, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, it's a good idea, building yourself up in this most holy faith, to be a part, to meet like-minded young people." Because you know, at some point, in fact, my son at that time, I think he was interested in a young lady. That happens, and that's normal. That's good. Nothing wrong with that. But so, can you encourage young people to get together like you are this weekend? And build yourself up in this most holy faith? You ever been told you should be in Sunday School? You should be... Ever been told you should be in the prayer room? Things like that? Build your... Take advantage of what we have, right in front of us. Be in Bible study, be in, why, Friday night church in Portland. You're here because you want to be here. Build yourself up in this most holy faith, praying in the Holy Ghost. You know, the Spirit of God helps us to pray. You ever been to that place, where you didn't know what to do, how to pray? Holy Spirit, He intercedes for us. With groanings that cannot be uttered. When you're agonizing, when you're hurting, when you don't know what to do, you're at a great loss, pray with the Holy Spirit helping you, because when we do, we're praying according to His will. We won't pray in contrary to what He wants when we're praying with the Holy Spirit with us, because He wants to lead us and guide us into all truth and show us things to come. He wants to open the Word for us, show us God's will. And He's... The Holy Spirit, He. He's a person. You know, if I... Brother Jack's my pastor. What would he do if I said, "You know, Brother Jack, I like it. It's a good guy." How would he feel about that? He. The Holy Spirit is a person. He's very gentle. He's described as like a dove, easily scared away. Don't do anything that would scare Him away, because He can be hurt. So pray with the mind that the Holy Spirit will help you and be willing to follow Him, and as He leads you with those groanings that cannot be uttered, that's a prayer that will be answered. That's a prayer that God will answer for you. Keep yourselves in the love of God, He says. Why, don't let anything interfere with the love of God that you have. That first love, you remember? You remember how you felt when you first got saved? You were excited? You remember that? Do you still have that same excitement? Yes. Keep yourselves in the love of God, because I know, life happens. Things come along. We suffer hardships. Things happened to us that we didn't anticipate, and that shouldn't have happened to us. It wasn't right, but they happen. We lose a loved one. The Lord knows. We have to trust Him that He knows. But we can keep ourselves in the love of God, looking for the mercy of our Lord Jesus Christ. Says, "And some have compassion, making a difference." Sometimes we have to use some discernment, don't we? Sometimes we have to recognize, you know, people say, "Well, don't judge. The Lord speaks to different people in different ways." You know, my experience, and this is just my opinion, is that's just an excuse to do wrong. But nonetheless, we need to keep ourselves in the love of God. Know the Word. Be a contender. Don't be a pretender. You know, pretenders are like those old boxers. You ever... Again, I look back to my childhood, because that's all I really know of that. I mean, I'm not... Don't get me wrong. I know what goes on in the world today. But I look back at some of those boxers that would come in and stand there, and they would look all mean and everything, and about two punches later, they're on the mat. They weren't contenders, they were pretenders. You know, a little challenge comes our way, and we fail. Be a contender. Be one that can say, "We're gonna take a few punches from the old enemy." You just know that right off, but that's okay. God will help us, because He says here, really, He gives praise, Jude does, "Unto Him that is able to keep you from falling and present you faultless before the presence of His glory with exceeding joy." Jesus is coming. He's coming soon. God will keep you. He will. He has promised to keep you, and you'll not fall. Oh, you may be set back a little bit by the old punch of the devil, but God will keep you. There's no reason for us to fail or to fall. But may God help you. May God help me. I've been encouraged this weekend. I really have. And it's like many occasions that we experience in life, that when you go to, maybe you or me go to encourage someone else, and we come away being encouraged. I feel that way. I feel that way. But tonight, as we close this service, you know, this... This needn't be really the high point. I believe that God has something in store for us even tonight, but this could be just kind of the jumping off point to how God is gonna help us in the future. Special meetings isn't just a blessing, or a good time, or maybe I was down at the altar and cried a few tears and felt better, but it's something... Somebody asked me one time... We had a great revival in Roseburg, and somebody asked me one time, they said to... Asked me, they said, "How long did that revival last?" And I thought for a moment, and I said, "It's still going on in our hearts." See, it bore fruit. It wasn't just what happened there, and it was amazing. God heard and answered prayer, and He blessed, and we received blessings. But really, what happened there bore fruit to what we are today. And that's what God wants to do for us. That's what God has done for us. I think, I think, I think we can go forward from here and just be a contender. But don't be a pretender, be, be a contender. Earnestly contend for the faith that was once delivered unto the saints. God bless you as we sing the song of invitation. God has a, uh, you, you've had your Martha moment. God has that Mary moment for you. Sit at the feet of Jesus, see what he will do for you. I believe he'll hear and answer your prayer tonight.